The first thing on our agenda, well, first welcome to the planning commission for Leonardtown. And let's see, our first thing is to approve the minutes from January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. If everybody could take a look at their minutes. If you have any changes or corrections.
I'll make a motion to pass the, approve the minutes from previous meeting.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes passed. Next on the agenda is the town administrative report. LaChelle.
Hello. Our, in our last meeting, we had a proclamation acknowledging the retirement of Christine Rayne, the presidency CEO of Bed-Stair St. Mary's Hospital, so it was really nice. She came and accepted. We also had a public hearing on the concept plan for Leonard's at town round two, which you all heard the prior month and sent a favorable recommendation, and we thankfully approved the concept plan. We also awarded the bid for our cleaning services for the town hall and for the park restrooms to O'Connor Cleaning. And then we did a liquor license letter of support for the next phase of Brutus Garden. She's opening the back section of Shepherd's Hill, and we did the next phase of the, she's asking for a liquor license extension for the next phase of the outdoor seating. Also, last week, we got out the next round of the facade grants. This is our third round of grants. We did fifty thousand the first time, twenty-five thousand the second, and we have another fifty thousand done on the grants that we're going to be doing this time. We've had about twenty-five different businesses that have made improvements with those, and it's been well over probably two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, three-hundred thousand worth of improvements that have been done from that seed money. So it's been, yeah, very successful. Just been applying for a lot of other grants. We're moving forward with the L-Town Alley project. So we have applied for a couple more grants for that. We're about a hundred-and-fifty thousand short for that project. It's about a five-hundred-and-fifty thousand, six-hundred thousand dollar project. So we are still moving forward with the, with the money that we do have. That's an exciting project. And then, of course, the wastewater treatment plant expansion. We just applied for a seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar grant for that, for some stormwater work and flood, flood mitigation work at the wastewater treatment plant. So hopefully we'll have favorable on that. And then I'm, we're just getting ready. They've delivered the equipment for the next phase of the slims up and forth. And then we're getting started, and we're going to be replacing also the kayak lines with string, so. Lots of fun things going on. Any questions?
Are you doing something that will be cooler and it's sunny?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm doing a totally different ramp.
Nice.
I'm working with DNR right now to design it.
And moving it where it's not flooding, like where it gets all
It'll have an access ramp to it. It'll be in the same location, but it'll be an ADA accessible way up going to it.
Very good. Thank you.
And tomorrow we have the presentation at four o'clock?
Correct. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Got you.
So the WiFon plan presentation, I think I said that to everybody, is four o'clock tomorrow. You can come here live and see it, or you can, it'll be streamed, livestreamed on our YouTube channel. So really excited about that. I've got Steve Preu today. It's awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions, LaChelle? Moving on to new business, our first case of four for Merrick Homes is case number fourteen dash zero five, Clark's Rest Phase Four Blap. Request for review and approval of the Phase Four.
Okay. So Merrick is actually requesting approval of a boundary line adjustment plat, hence the blap, for lot three-fourteen and Phase Four of the subdivision. The Clark's Rest subdivision received final site plan approval from the town in March of two thousand and twelve. Since then, several additions and changes have been, have been made to the plan, the last amendment taking place on December twenty-first of two thousand and twenty. For lot three-fourteen, an error was found in the original Phase Four plats, which contained an overlap of the property into the Leonard's Grant subdivision. To correct that overlap, the blap has removed two-hundred-and-fifty-three square feet from the northwestern side of lot three-fourteen and added it back to the Leonard's Grant subdivision parcel A. And I do have Marvin Osler here from Merrick if you have any questions of him.
Basically, just what that was, the two engineers who agreed with the property line was.
Hi, and I have a question. Does this, only because this came up actually over the weekend. So lots thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one, is that part of that too, or is that something different? There was somebody who said that they had to redraw their boundaries or something like that, I think, over in Clark's Rest.
Which lots?
Thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one. I just didn't know if this, I didn't think it had anything to do with it, but
No, that has nothing to do with this. What, I could go back and look just so that you know what it is?
Oh, I'm not worried.
Okay, but that was
I was trying to figure out that was all kind of related with the survey issue. Thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one.
Yeah.
You don't have to follow up with it. Okay.
No, that, I mean, if it was Clark's, those lots in Clark's Rest, that would have been in Phase One, which was done a very long time ago.
Right, those were like the earlier ones. Got it. That was it. I just didn't know if it was related. Thank you.
Right. Does anyone have a motion?
Should I move to approve the boundary line adjustment plat? To correct the property line for lot three-fourteen?
One second.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Boundary lot adjustment is approved. The next case is case number fourteen oh five, Clark's Rest Phase Four A. Request for review and approval of the Phase Four A plats.
Okay, so again, Merrick is requesting plat approval for Phase Four A plats, which contain five single-family homes on Water Veil Drive and splits the Clark's Rest subdivision adjoining to the Leonard's Grant subdivision. So Water Veil Drive is an existing roadway in Leonard's Grant, which will be extended to accommodate these five additional houses. And Phase Four A is the last phase in the Clark's Rest subdivision. And again, Marvin can answer any questions that you may have.
This is, what's my, this is just one property that ended up on the other side of the lane that only accesses through Leonard's Grant, so that's why it's, it was always planned to go through there, and that's, we just mentioned, that's why.
There's a different house, like you guys changed like to a farmhouse. It's like a white farmhouse, like, like new design. I liked it.
Yeah, it's really basic. It's the same, it's the same product. You just use it, you just use a black, you know, the black windows.
Yeah.
Different, different siding going a different direction.
Are you talking about the one at the corner of Lindsay and Dairy Barn?
As you go into Leonard's Grant, right.
Yeah, that one's really pretty.
It's really nice.
It's, it's very pretty. Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions on the Phase Four A and the Four A plats? Okay, so I hear a motion.
I'll move to approve the request for case number fourteen oh five, Clark's Rest Phase Four A plats.
One second. All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is case fourteen zero five, Clark's Rest subdivision, and it's request for architectural review and approval.
Okay. Merrick Properties has entered into a contract with Richmond, America Homes to sell the, to sell them the remaining single-family lots in Phases Four and Four A, as well as nine remaining unbuilt lots in Phase Three. Merrick Properties will continue to construct the remaining twenty-four townhomes and complete the required development work within the neighborhood. Richmond America Homes will build and sell the nine homes in Phase Three, the thirty-three homes in Phase Four, and the five homes in Phase Four A. The architectials submitted are similar in size, shape, and materials to that of the existing Merrick Homes. And I do have Taylor Ferris of Richmond America Homes here to answer any questions that you may have of him.
Does anybody have any questions or discussion on the facades or the, or for Richmond America?
I was just going to say, could you explain a little bit more of why this is happening and whatnot, just to, just for the record?
Basically, we've been in Clark's Rest for quite a while, and the opportunity came to, from Richmond America, to see if we're interested in selling. And we are interested in gearing our company down to a smaller scale at some point. So this kind of gave us the opportunity to do that. So basically, we decided we want to build all, out the rest of the town alleys, which means we're, we're going to build out two-hundred-and-ninety-six either sold or under contract houses in the subdivision, and we're selling them the remaining forty-eight. And like, pretty much, the same thing Jayden said was the same thing I was going to say. We're still going to do the development all the way to the end. So it just really helps us company-wise to slow ourselves down a little bit. We still do a lot of, and then we're going to get pretty much out of the development business. The development business for people our size is not, it's just not feasible going forward. It's going to be, it's going to be the nationals. It's going to be the bigger guys thinking weathering the storms better than we can. There'll, there'll never be another builder our size that I know of doing a Clark's Rest type development. So it's just, it's just too big with too many parts. It takes too much, too much time. So it's a good way to, and we get to see the project all the way through. It's a good breaking point because it's mostly all separated from the rest of the subdivision. So, and like, like Jayden said, when I went through, the, the plans are similar. They actually have more, they have like, I think it was seven, seven different plans with seven different elevations. So it's, it's like forty-nine different opportunities, which is actually much more than what we had. So it's, it's, the variety should work well in the subdivision. So that's pretty much it. Any other questions on that? Oh, but, but like, like what Jayden did say, we still got about, I think it probably will take about eighteen months to build it out. And we still have about, we still have two years of bonds on it, so I'm going to be around for a while. Would you say until?
You can't get away from us that easy.
It has been a great project for us.
Yes.
The whole project we've got over thirty-seven, thirty-eight years, it's, it's been the most rewarding, the most fun. Hadn't been the most difficult, I will say that. It's been, they all have their challenges, but it's, it's been a really good project for us.
Maybe not a question, but a comment. It's tough to hear that.
You want to tell, you want to tell us where the best part was?
Don't tell that one. Dog butt. I gotta keep fair. Oh, it's just tough to hear that. Like, you know, you've done this my whole life pretty much, so. I'm happy for you.
Do you have any questions of Taylor while he's here? Would you like to at least meet him while he's here?
Sure. He's walking in, goes everybody at first name basis.
Taylor Ferris with, I know Richmond America.
Hi, Heather Earhart. Nice to meet you.
If there's, if there's anything else you wanted to say about, please.
I mean, we're, we're excited about the opportunity, so. But we've been looking in Southern Maryland, we're looking at rural Charles County, St. Mary's County, you know, Leonardtown. I worked for NBR before I came to Richmond American, and I've been in conversations with Dale and Marvin, even about this specific project, and it's one that, you know, I've always thought very highly of. They did a fantastic job. It's well-planned, and we're excited to get in. We want to continue on exactly what's been happening up to this point, so. We like to keep the same look, the same feel, and, you know, we hope to do it quickly and get the rest of the community wrapped up. But, you know, again, you know, if we get the approval, we are very excited about it.
They'll be part of the HOA, all of that is seamless, right?
I already showed it on Tuesday.
I was just going to ask.
Does anybody have any further questions on any of the design? I did have one question, and it's on Phase, I think it's Three. It's an old, I have the little map here. And I see that there's not, there's a road and it's not a dead stop or a cul-de-sac. So it looks like it butts Edwards Farm. Is that for future planning?
We require that on the, on the concept plan for the possibility to cut through, but it's not.
It's just the way it's, okay.
We just wanted the connectivity to be there.
In case it's needed. Got it. All right, so I hear a motion. Want me to make a motion?
You're up.
Your turn.
I move to approve the request for case number fourteen dash zero five, Richmond America Homes Architectural.
I'm a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion passes? Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Right, next up, we have case number five dash zero eight, the Slice House, four-one-five-seven-five Park Avenue. Here for a concept site plan review and approval for a three-thousand-square-foot commercial building.
Okay, the applicant is requesting review and approval of a concept plan for the construction of a new three-thousand-square-foot building. The applicant currently owns and operates the Slice House located at four-one-five-six-five Park Avenue. In February of two thousand and twenty-one, the applicant purchased a five-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-three-square-foot piece of land on the west side of the existing Bell family property for the purpose of building a new three-thousand-square-foot building. The applicant is currently proposing a two-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-square-foot restaurant with a seven-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot outdoor-covered seating area. The new building will be required to have a grease trap on site. Upon completion of the new building, the existing building located at four-one-five-six-five Park Avenue will be demolished and replaced with the required parking, landscaping, and stormwater management facilities required for the new building. In order to demolish the existing building, an asbestos report is required to be sent to the state of Maryland for review and approval prior to demolition. No use in occupancy can be issued for the new building until the old building has already been demolished. Parking for the new building is required at one space per one-hundred square feet of floor area. Typically, outdoor seating is not included in that calculation for parking, considering outdoor seating is considered seasonal based on the weather. Therefore, the parking, or the required parking was calculated using the twenty-three-hundred square feet. There are a total of twenty-three parking spaces provided, which meets the required parking regulations. Both properties are currently entirely paved with no landscaping provided. The proposed development will provide for one-thousand-three-hundred-fourteen square feet of landscaping to include four modest garden areas with five trees. There's currently no stormwater management facilities on either parcel. The proposed development will provide for three planter boxes to manage the stormwater, pending Department of Public Works approval. Screening of the dumpster area on Lawrence Ave, Ave should be provided prior to final site plan approval per Section one fifty-five dash twenty-eight, Tac B, number ten. The applicant has provided architectural renderings during the concept site plan review in order to receive feedback from the commission prior to final site plan approval. The architectural renderings provided indicate the building will have metal panel siding, metal panel roofing, and a pre-finished aluminum gutter and downspouts. The outdoor-covered seating area will have wood accents to separate the seating area from the parking lot. The applicant has submitted the plans to the Department of Public Works for review and approval. Since the writing of the staff report, we did receive comments back from Department of Public Works. There are a few things that need to be remedied, but they'll be dealt with prior to final site plan approval. If the proposed project is approved, language will be added to the final site plan motion regarding architectural screening and demolition of the existing building for the record. The only other thing that I have is Chairperson Moulds could not be here today. She's with her, her grandchildren. And she did send in an email that she asked that I read into the record, so I'm going to go ahead and do that. "I'm happy to see improvement on the site. For the architectural review, I would like them to work more closely with the town, taking into consideration the development of the areas around their site. I would like to see a more traditional building that would complement the architecture of our historic district. There should be more landscape screening, especially on the property line shared with the proposed townhouses. I hope these comments are helpful. I'm looking forward to the new restaurant and more outdoor seating." Jean Mould. So, I do have Jean Burrows from Little Silence's Rest, and the owner of the property, Ken Held, if you have any questions of them, or any additional questions for me.
I guess I have a question. The townhouses that you referenced, what are, what are they going to look like to me?
Okay, something about I have architecturals on those. The other side? Oh, yeah, thank you. So the, the Bell Building is keeping their frontage on Washington Street.
Okay.
The, all the back buildings will be torn down and replaced with townhouses. So this is where the proposed building is going to go. All of this here will be townhouses. We do not have, I'm going to leave this up here because I don't want to use it. We don't have architecturals for them yet, but we do know that they will be upscale townhouses because we have met with the developers. So more of the brick building with the, the, help me out, LaChelle, what are, give me some descriptive words here.
Dormers?
Yes, dormers. I obviously can't think today. With very nice dormers and stuff like that. We also have, and LaChelle can elaborate on it, and it will be discussed at the meeting tomorrow. But we're, we'll also, with the Tudor Hall plan, you'll see a lot of development going in across the street on Lawrence. So you'll see development there, going back across where it connects, the road connects. Fenwick will go through into Tudor Hall. Cherry is expanding. So you're going to see a lot of changes in that area, and I think that maybe that's why the architecturals are going to be so important at this point. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Uh huh.
Okay.
I'm not sure that, I mean, there's not, the setback is only three feet, I think, on the backside, so I don't know that there'd be really to do with.
Yeah, I was going to mention that.
No, I believe the, the Slice outside the townhomes were facing lined, so it would be the size of the townhomes.
Yes, and they have, they have a three-foot setback as well. And the draft plans that we looked at, there was a small grassy area with trees behind there. So in, in this district, in the commercial business district, you have very small setbacks. And in most cases, you have zero foot setbacks because it is meant to be more of an urban area. So it's really nice when you can incorporate some trees onto the site and, and some nice lovely pottery and stuff like that, but it's not, we don't require a landscaping buffer or anything like that.
Maybe down the road, they could do something jointly or something, you know, both, you know.
Yeah.
With six foot, you might be able to do something together.
Yeah, but
Well, and I think a lot of people's expectations of moving into something like that, that's what they're coming for, is that area. You know, they're not expecting like huge grassy areas around you. You're coming into, living in a townhouse in a downtown area with businesses around, so.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, it's, I was actually surprised to see that they could put in some areas now. So that's nice. I thought that was pretty nice. Right. But, I mean, I, I, I see what she's saying. I'm assuming, like you said before, the architectural review, that's going to be part, taken into account with the rest of the, what's going to be developed. So it's not just going to be something that looks different than everything else. So.
First, I'd like to say I'm a Slice House fan, and I'm glad you guys are expanding. And I'm looking forward to the next time you do deconstructed egg roll.
There you go.
I missed my green bean casserole last year.
Looking at, at your plans, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment early before the real architectural review. Looking at your plans and, and then looking at the standards for site planning and building design from the Leonardtown code, there's several things I want to put on the record that I think need to be considered. And, and it's Section Three, and then several of the subsections. Three B, and I'm not sure that you'll be able to do anything about this one, but that's designing the required parking area into a series of small or discreet connected lots rather than a large interrupted, uninterrupted parking lot. Section D, again, we just kind of talked about that. Parking areas should be designed to be partially screened from view from adjacent streets and building occupants. Tough one, given, you know, given the space that you have. And then building design, this one, I think there is more opportunity to, to affect the, the plans that you showed us. Section Three of building design, large buildings should avoid long blank, uninterrupted walls, which definitely is what you have on, on one side. The other, I'm curious about the, the side of the windows.
Yeah.
It looks like they're, they're on the second floor, but well, wait, how does that, what's it go?
It was just more to create more wall space in the restaurant, so we put those up top. But, as you know, I'm, I'm not afraid of any project. I'm super flexible. So if you all wanted to see more windows or more glass, initially, this was going to be a second building. Now that we've gone in a different direction to where we're going to demolish the first building, you know, we are completely flexible in terms of, you know, where we would add doors and windows and stuff, especially because of the, the way the outdoor seating is. And then now we have an opportunity to do some outdoor seating on the side, as opposed to just in the front. As you all know, you know, any of the projects that I've been involved with, you know, they're always with the intent to improve. And, you know, and, and we have a history of improving, you know, two-bladed buildings in town. And, you know, so, so whatever you all deem fit, I will do. I mean, it'll be a good looking building.
Yeah, to me, it, it has kind of a warehouse look rather than the look that we're
Well, and then, and of course, you know, there's, and just to give you an idea, I mean, this is just, this is a very similar concept where you, if you, that you can do. This is a brewery that was just built down in Wilmington, North Carolina. And as you can see, you know, the same material, but with different things and fencing and stuff like that. You can, you know, make them very attractive looking, so.
One of my other favorite cities, by the way.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, no, we are, we are extremely flexible right now. You know, we, we plan to have the front of the building that goes out to the outdoor seating is going to be a huge garage door that can come up. So you'd be able to sit in the restaurant, and then anybody that's sitting under the, in the outdoor seating undercover, you know, will be a part of the restaurant. And then the side of the building, which is what you're referring to, I'm totally flexible.
Yeah, I, I do think that needs to be addressed. And then the next paragraph four says, "Large buildings should avoid long blank, uninterrupted roof planes." Again, which is, which is what is in the building now, is, is a long roof plane that
Well, what we wound up doing, this is, we actually, from the original plans, it was all going to be twenty feet all the way across. And so architecturally, what we did is, is we made the front part, which is the smaller eight-hundred square feet, at about fourteen feet. So therefore, there's going to be an architectural break on the building to make it look better. So that's, so, so, look, the roof is not three-thousand square feet all the way across. It's going to actually be lower in the front to give it some architectural appeal along Park Avenue.
Was that, was that reflected in?
It should be in there.
On the outdoor, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So initially, the building was going to go all the way across at twenty feet. So this is what, this faces Park Avenue as you're looking in. So as you can see, you're going to have two different roof lines in order to break up exactly what you're talking about.
Okay. And then we might be able to do something else with maybe a different, another elevation again, pathway or something.
Yeah, still, still to me, a long, under the, up at roof plane. And then the last two, number six, "Large buildings should use articulation." That's kind of what we're talking about. I just think it needs some more relief and, and, you know, you mentioned windows, but, but maybe even some kind of facade changes on the long sides to have it less of a warehouse look to me.
Understood.
And then the last one to me is probably the most important one. Building design should incorporate traditional building materials such as masonry stone, heavy timbers, brick, or other heavy timbers, brick, or other natural appearing materials. I think that rather than the metal siding that you're showing is, is more in line with, with where we're trying to go with Leonard Town, that is, is my opinion.
Ken, is it optional with those kits to build it as a metal structure and like it is here? Do you, do they have the options to, for the, for the face covering, the facade coverings to add to it so that it looks brick or stone or something like that? I know Dave looked at a couple, that's the only thing I was asking.
You know, we can, we can certainly do columns, you know, and, and things to break it up or whatever, but I, I, I find these buildings, um, you know, obviously, when we chose what we were gonna do to be quite attractive, actually. Um, I don't know if you've ever been at Bert's Fifty's Diner, there's a brand new metal building, a gray metal building that sits right on the hill. It's a super attractive building and it is a metal building, and I understand what you're saying, but, you know, there's, we're, we're certainly going to, uh, you know, with, um, uh, materials, you know, make it look good, but, but it is intended to be a metal building.
I mean, I, I, I would just say that, um, for many years, in the early two thousands and such, we, the board was always very adamant about brick. We've kind of gotten away from that a little bit, you know, if you look at, um, um, Angelina X and Sweet Bay, I mean, we've added some different types of materials, um, so it's not that everything has to be brick these days.
Yeah, they used Klepper?
Uh, yeah, but, uh, but, I mean, even the door, we used like the, the word, uh, I mean, some, some of that siding, I think, yeah. I mean, so there's different materials and it's not as stringent as when these design guidelines were written. But I don't know if there's maybe along the bottom, or if there's some detail that could be added or something of different materials that would make it look, you know, a little.
Uh, 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 again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying, uh, using the word trust me, but, you know, obviously, you know, again, you know, my, my history in, in three years is, is consistent improvement, you know, of the facilities that we, you know, now own. Um, you know, and, and, you know, I just put a new roof on the Slice House two, I just paved the back lot. You know, we're gonna take, uh, advantage of the new facade improvement grant, put an awning, you know, on Slice House two. Uh, you know, that was a, you know, that was an awful looking building and certainly isn't a great looking building yet, but, uh, but it will be now that I own the property. Um, so I, I believe that we have a history of, of, of making things look attractive, like I am a bit of an architectural snob and, you know, and, uh, and do wanna, you know, make sure that the building is, is attractive.
Well, these are all good points that, you know, Jean has sent in and, you know, Doug's suggestions. And then I think one of Jean's suggestions was to work with the town to come up with some solutions, we could do that and, uh, have that as a recommendation in the motion. Um, or we can just, I, I don't know how typically you do that kind of thing.
I don't really have to address the, the architecturals in your motion at this point.
Yeah.
I mean, it was here to give you feedback, you know, uh, he doesn't really have to submit architecturals to the final site plan. But then he did it early to give you some opportunity to give him feedback and then he, he will present his final architecturals at the, at the final site plan.
Right, 'cause this is just a concept plan first, so, we, I think the rest can come after and give him some suggestions that he can take back with him. I do have another question, I guess, how fast, I guess, 'cause there's mitigation, if there's asbestos, but how fast between this being built? 'Cause you said it has to be completely built and then completely demolished before it's gonna be occupied, right?
Well, it doesn't have to be completely built, but before we will give him an occupancy permit.
I see.
The old building will have to be torn down, so that's something I can discuss with you, Ken, but basically, what he's gonna wanna do is depending on how quickly after his final approval he wants to get started, I would definitely start working on getting the asbestos report for the existing building now so that we can get it sent off to the state and go ahead and request that demolition date. I'm assuming he doesn't wanna be out of business for too long.
That's what I'm, I'm getting at.
Yeah, so, I mean, the thought is, is, I mean, in my mind, it may be different for you, but in my mind, is that he could get the building, the new building built. You're already closed on, what, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday? So, uh, you know, there is a possibility where, you know, maybe Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, you know, after the building's built, you could get all the equipment and everything moved over so that while the inspections are happening on that, you know, your final fire marshal, your final health department, um, then maybe the old building could be being torn down at the same time.
Right.
Um, that way, maybe you're, you could get it, there's a possibility, if you work it right, that you could get it done in those three days and not have to be closed at all. But at the very most. We'll just, we'll all go to the big Slice House and get four pies instead of slices.
Um, but when, when it's demolished, then obviously the whole parking structure, lo- our lot and everything's gonna have to be then done, so that's another.
Yeah.
Time, so.
Yeah, I'm certain, you know, there will be a little bit of leeway there because we do understand that it's gonna take some time.
I'm just wondering the process of how that usually works.
Yep.
I thought, from my knowledge, because I thought we talked about this with Penny's Bar too, with Davis. That like you have to bring almost all this stuff to like cover around the building.
If there is asbestos.
If there is, so at this point, you're just kind of in a.
In a, in a commercial building, if you know it's been a commercial use, at any time, it's like, you're required to go to MDE and get it tested and get it prepared.
So that's the part you're on, is to have it tested.
Yes. I mean, if there is asbestos there, then, you know, Ken would be responsible for mitigating that, uh, tenting it or doing whatever during the demolishment of the building.
Okay.
Um, but if there is no asbestos, then it would be like the other buildings, and they could come in and knock it down, use it as a fire training exercise with the fire department, there's a number of ways to, to knock down a building, as long as there's no asbestos.
Any other questions? Right, do I hear?
Oh, I did, I have one, sorry. I was like, wait a minute, um, I, you said the garage door, so I see this here, so is that the back, that's the back, right, with the garage door? Did you say you were putting it on the side?
And the back.
But not one on the side?
Charlie, not one on the side, but we're also, um, thinking now, uh, initially, we were not planning on demolishing the Slice House. Now that we're demolishing the Slice House, we'll, we'll probably put an entrance on the side with a facade to break up that, what, uh, to Doug's point, to break that up. So when you're, when you're in the parking lot and you're looking at the building, you're not just looking at the sides, the windows, we'll probably put a front door there. So there, therefore, the patio itself will be separate from the entrance to the restaurant, which would be facing out to Lawrence, not to Park. From, a- and that would be probably a, a, a nice glass double door with a facade, so, uh, that's an adjustment that I was talking about. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the request for case number five dash oh eight owned by four-one-five-six-five Park Avenue LLC for concept site plan for a three thousand square foot commercial building.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion's approved.
So what are next steps?
Um, you're gonna go back with Jean and you're gonna work on the actual site design.
Okay.
Um, so that you can come back here for your final site plan approval.
Okay.
You're also gonna get ahold of your architect.
Yep.
And revise all the interior and exterior architecturals so that we can get those submitted to the final motion.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, and then, um, there, there shouldn't be any other issues other than that in terms of for final approval. Once we have all that stuff, there's anything.
They're gonna go to DPW for the storm, uh, the final stormwater certification.
Yeah.
And the final site plan, they just do a review, but they've been turning it around a little bit.
Yeah.
So can, uh, can we do that before we spend any more money on architectural plans and stuff, or is that, yeah, so I, I wanna do that first before we.
Just, and Jean will let me know when you're ready to come back for final site plan.
Okay.
Yep, he's good at keeping me in the loop.
Cool.
Next on the agenda, other business review of monthly in-house permits from January twenty twenty-two.
Only one month this time.
Yes, only, you guys have been meeting monthly and you don't have another meeting next month.
All right, working it.
So, sorry, I am going to work here.
That's fine, that's why we're here, right?
That's right.
I have a question.
Okay.
The car wash, the Chesled, we haven't seen that, but there's a big old sign up.
We are fully aware of that, they, Mr. Chesled did come in and speak with me about the possibility of putting up a car wash in that location.
In like a marsh?
Uh, the sign is, was not supposed to be posted. However, it has been posted, we are working to have it taken down because it is an illegal sign. However, that project will be coming before you for review and approval, probably in a couple months.
That really caught me off guard.
It caught everybody off guard, we received numerous phone calls. Yeah, we received numerous phone calls, so, we're, we're working to have it removed until he at least gets the concept site plan approved, and then maybe he can put the sign back up that says, you know, coming soon, but, yeah, for right now, it needs to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it, that's all I have.
Felt pretty straightforward.
Okay.
All right, you have to busy.
Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
All right.